This meeting, the BISD Board Meeting, December 19, 2006, 5:30 in the evening, 1900 Price Road. Let's please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and indivisible.
Thank you. Item four, roll call, everybody's present. Item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of December 19, 2006, with any corrections. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. There is just one correction, and that would be on consent agenda under B, number 15. On the amount, it says Tennessee in the amount not to exceed 2616, that should be 2626. When you add 1313, it should be 2626. That's just the only correction that we have. It's a typo.
Mr. President, Mr. Powers?
Yes, I'd like to have a change in the order of the day. I'd like to move item under closed meeting, A 32, 33, right after A 7.
Right after A 7?
Right.
Okay. Any other corrections or deletions? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion by Mr. Powers, second by Mr. Aguilar. In favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass, Mr. Gonalo, you oppose?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 6 to 1. Any other corrections or deletions? Mr. Cortez?
Yes, sir. My item, item 32, I would like to pull it for this meeting. I'll request administration bring it back in the first regular scheduled meeting in January.
Okay, well, we have two very similar items, so that, you know, we'll still discuss it. Any other, okay, does that require, no, it does not require. Any other corrections or deletions?
Item 32 is going to not be discussed tonight?
Item 32 has been pulled by the, by Mr. Cortez, who submitted it. And item 33 will be discussed after item 7, A 7.
After we come back from closed meeting on the grievance?
Correct, correct. An open session. Any other corrections or deletions? Okay, if no other corrections or deletions, all in favor to approve the agenda for this regular board meeting, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 6, recommend approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of November 21, 2006, and the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 5, 2006, with any corrections. Any corrections to the minutes?
Mrs. Galvan?
Page 5. This meeting called to order. Did Vice President Munoz call the meeting to order?
No, I think that's an error. Norma, we have Mr. Munoz on the minutes.
What page is that?
That's page 5.
Page 5.
He was absent too.
He was, okay. And I thought I saw him vote.
There's another one with a vote.
Yeah, he voted here. I don't remember where.
On page 6.
Page 6.
At the bottom, where it says yea. Mr. Munoz did not vote.
Okay, that was the one.
That was a phantom.
Ms. Ortiz, any other corrections on the minutes? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes as described, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 7, Superintendents Report, A Conference Presentation, 1, recognition of Hannah High School Golden Eagle Marching Band. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. You know, this is truly an honor to have the great achievements that we have in our district. And Hannah High School is, has received an enormous honor this year, and I'm not going to take any of the thunder from the persons that really deserve it, so I'm going to ask Ms. Hawkins to introduce this presentation. Ms. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, President Escobedo, members of the board. It is my privilege to introduce Yolanda Kruger, Principal of Hannah High School, and Paul Flynchball, Supervisor of Band Activities. Before I call them to the podium, I just would like to take one moment to also recognize our Hannah Band Boosters, and thank you very much for all you do for the band.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Good evening, Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, area superintendents, and distinguished members of the audience. It is a great pleasure for us to be here tonight to acknowledge the tremendous accomplishments of the mighty Hannah Golden Eagle Band. This year, the band students broke down barriers with numerous successes, both on and off the field. Their dedication and commitment to one another in their quest for excellence has been nothing short of exemplary. The 2006 Hannah Golden Eagle Band is Barnum and the Valley's best, and it is exemplified by standards, ethics, and teamwork that have proven time and again the limitless abilities of the youth of our community. Together, the students of the Hannah Golden Eagle Band have achieved the following: superior UIL Pigskin Ratings, UIL Area G Champions, and the highest ranking of any 5A Brownsville High School band ever at this UIL State Marching Competition. Most important of all is that each and every one of these members of this band is an exemplary and a model student who represents our city and our community in a manner that we can all truly be proud of. It is amazing to observe these splendid individuals, these dedicated instructors, and the outstanding Band Boosters combine their efforts to achieve these state-level results. We would like to thank the BISD Board of Trustees and our Superintendent of Schools for your continued support and for honoring the accomplishments of these students and the outstanding organization that we call the Hannah Golden Eagle Band. I would like to introduce to you the directors of this band, and they are. Our head band director is Mr. Dennis Ewing. His assistants, his assistants are Mr. Mick Coontz, Mr. Sam Rodriguez, Ms. Nora Rush, and Ms. Christina DeLeon was not able to be with us tonight. The drum majors for the Hannah Golden Eagle Band are Michael Hernandez, Susana Gonzalez, and Jonathan Lumeng. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Gonzalez as well as Dr. Escobedo, so please join us for a special presentation.
Congratulations, great job.
Proud of you.
Great job, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, sir.
You guys did an awesome job, and not only on the field and off the field, but you're also an exemplary to the whole district. You guys do a wonderful job. I even got to dance with you a little bit during your presentation of Santa and Friends. So you're multi-talented, and the work that you all do as band directors also is awesome. I really believe you did an outstanding job, and you have always done an outstanding job, and you're a good example, not just for this community, but for the whole state of Texas and the nation. And I really commend you in the leadership that you've taken this year and throughout your careers in the high school band. And in behalf of the Brownsville Independent School District, the Board of Trustees, and administration, we proudly commend the Hannah High School Golden Eagle Marching Band for extraordinary achievement at the 2006 5A Pigskin Jubilee, UIL Area G Marching Contest, and UIL 5A Texas State Marching Competition. Signed this date by myself, Hector Gonzalez Superintendent, and Dr. Enrique Escobedo Jr., Board President. Congratulations, guys.
And now, we will present to you the members of the Hannah Golden Eagle Band, and we will begin with our seniors, and then after that, we'll present the students by section, so brace yourself, there are a lot of kids, okay? Our seniors are, ready? Okay, Brian Abanillo, David Agüero, Aaron Aguilar, Gloria Aguilar, Abel Atkinson, John Barut, Tanya Ceballos, Bonifacio Cordero, Ruth Galarza, Cynthia Garcia, Eric Garza, Courtney Glover, John Gonzalez, Joshua Gonzalez, Susana Gonzalez, our drum major, Lydia Grimaldo, Emily Hodgins, Jason Isaguirre, Christian Leal, Roman Leal, Janel Lumeng, Luis Magdaleno, Denise Martinez, Adrian Mijares, Orlando Mireles, Jonathan Mitchell, Ruben Mungia, Christine Paredes, Amanda Perez, Amy Perez, Linda Perez, Samantha Ramirez, Jacqueline Reyes, José Ríos, Richard Rodríguez, Sandra Rodríguez, Abby Romero, Amanda Salazar, Anna Salazar, Samuel Sauceda, Timothy Shin, Joshua Sierra, Cynthia Tobias, Lucio Torres, Julio Tovar, and Martha Troncoso. Those are our senior members.
In our flute section, we have Karen Amaya, Jose Barera, Leslie Barrientos, Rebecca Garcia, Kayla Garza, Amanda Gomez, David Gomez, Jennifer Gonzalez, Jacqueline Guin, Camille Jacinto, Crystal Meyer, Crystal Menard, Wendy Ochoa, Carla Pettis, Krista Potter, Reyna Ramirez, Melissa Richardson, Christina Rios, Emily Rivera, Maria Gonzalez, Aya Shin, Sandalia Solis, Miranda Vela, Audrey Villarreal, Kevin Alanis, Michelle Flores, Carla Kenzoa, Priscilla Gutierrez, oops, I'm in obos. Megan Hernandez, Danielle Lombaria, Jose Martinez, Kyla Rocha, Leslie Barrientos, Monica Luna, Ashley Perez, Ashley Rodriguez. These are our clarinets. Ruby Arana, Gabriel Atkinson, Judith Avalos, Betty Botelho, Jennifer Carpio, Ricky Flores, Dalia Garcia, Decele Garcia, Samantha Garcia, Griselda Grieto, Axel Gutierrez, Aida Hernandez, Cassandra Hernandez, Jose Hernandez, Yovania Evante, Rebecca Isaguirre, Jennifer Jefferson, Jonathan Lumeng, Ana Paz, Ashley Perez, Kathalia Reyes, Sarah Reyna, Amber Rodríguez, Nora Rosas, Leslie Sierra, Gabby Soto, Adrian Tapia, Jose Tovar, Amelia Villarreal, Gwen Villarreal, Myra Zoricosa, Nanny, and that's it, Myra. So here's our low clarinets.
We warned you, there were a lot of students. The low clarinets, we have Graciela Baillie, Raúl Chávez, Roberto García, José González, Marissa Magdaleno, Elizabeth Torres, Victoria Isaguirre, and Tawa Sanusi.
A lot, right? Congratulations.
Alto Sax, Kimberly Alanis, Oscar Barbosa, Francisco Charleno, Jonathan Cruz, Juan Delgado, Robert García, Jesús Garza, Lucas Gomez, Alex Gonzalez, Ray Gutierrez, Cassie Hernandez, Robert Hernandez, Josh Malanado, Rolando O'Connes, Parasio Olzano, Eva Ramirez, Jessica Solis, Francisco Torres, Ana Alatore, Stephen Botelho, Freddy De La Garza, Gabriel López, Ian Sloan, Josh Neese, and Roberto Lopez.
Really proud of you.
Cornets, José Aguilar, Aaron Arredondo, Javier Barbosa, Amanda Carrillo, Rush de la Fuente, Carl Eastridge, Daniel García, Omega Garza, Norma Gauzín, Adán González, Albert González, Christian Maciel, Joseph Martinez, Henaro Mercado, Jesús Perales, Nathan Ramirez, Randy Rodríguez, Zachary Seis, Ariel Torres, Ivan Torres, and Jesús Vera.
French horn, Clint Anderson, Mario Barrano, Victor Kalunga, Andreas Cordova, Danielle García, Francisco Garza, Olivia García, Clarissa Gonzalez, Vidal Gonzalez, Michael Hernandez, Trevor Knuckles, Sarah Quintanilla, Jesús Robles, Luis Torres, and Richard Ariola.
Trombones, Richard Ariola, Ryan Barrón, Juan Carlos Cárdenas, Jorge Castillo, Nathaniel Cervantes, Martin García, Emmanuel Huajardo, Hector Hernandez, Dallas Libby, Alejandro Martínez, Christian Martínez, Raúl Porras, Wendy Reyna, and Manuel Luna.
Ponium, Andrew Akla, Nicole Alabine, Gerardo Hernandez, Natalie Loumey, Josh Salinas, Ivan Santos, Azazel Gonzalez, Eduardo Guerrero, Juan Loeta, Miguel Ramirez, Rudy Rivera, Ivan Tovar, Gerardo Rigartay, and Adrian Barrientos.
And the percussion section, Carlos Cisneros, Michelle Connor, José Delgado, Luis Galindo, Gerardo Gámez, Danny Garza, Robert Garza, José Gómez, Marcus Hernandez, Joshua Lozoya, Enrique Macías, Giovanni Mejía, Adrian Salinas, John Agüero, Raúl Castillo, Javier Flores, Hugo González, Joseph Hernandez, Remundo Hernandez, Citlalik Laguna, Jonathan López, Joey Martinez, Pablo Martinez, Ian McDonald, Brianna Mejorado, Raúl Mungia, Thomas Nawat, Paul Odebastian, Margarita Ramirez, Christopher Rodríguez, José Saldana, and Jaime Serna.
In closing, on behalf of the Department of Fine Arts, I would like to thank the school board for you've provided the necessary resources to enable our students to be competitive at the state level. Tonight, on all the faces of these young adults, you've seen the impact your support is having on the students of BISD. I'm happy to report that at the 5A area and state marching level competitions, this has been the most successful year in the history of the Brownsville band program. Thank you again for your support, and especially for your recognition tonight of the state-level achievements of our BISD fine arts students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, of course, we're all proud of the band, High School, but I would like to take an opportunity to recognize Dr. Rendon, which is the administrator for fine arts. I don't know if she's still here or not, but let's recognize her also for her leadership, and also for the fine program that was presented, Christmas program at the old high school. When was it, Thursday, something like that? It was excellent. So one of the best programs we've had in Christmas holidays. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger, Mr. Flynchball, and Mrs. Dr. Rendon. Our next item on the agenda is item 2, Presentation of the Brownsville Independent School District Financial Report for the period ended October 31, 2006. Is our sound working properly? Okay, I can't hear it, so I'm assuming, okay, good, good. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Este, I'll call on Mr. Sanchez to make this presentation. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, board members. Last month, I reported to you that our revenues were a little bit behind because we don't have any payments coming in August, and as you can see on the first page, on page 31, you start to see the columns as actual to-date revenues, $124 million, actual expenditures, $129,000. That's combining all the funds, so the revenues are catching up. So, and if you notice, the percentage is over to the right, they're about 25%. This is the first quarter, so the budget and the actual is matching our projections, so it looks like we're in good shape. Any questions, sir?
Any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Lehman?
Page 32. I just questioned on the utility chargeback for food service. Can't see, I'm getting glare.
32?
I'm looking at the, that's professional services. Again, explain, Mr. Gonzalez, how is this being budgeted? It says here an amount of $161,000 has been expensed for utility chargebacks.
Uh huh.
If that's on a quarterly, it's awfully low, or what's the reason for that?
Um, I mean, it seems, it strikes me as being low. Yes, Mr. Sanchez, is that the true bill? Do you explain?
That is what we have so far posted, yes, sir.
That's posted?
That's posted, doesn't it? I couldn't tell you what's outstanding there. We were current today, but that's, on this particular date, that's what we have posted, yes. And it is, we budgeted all the utilities into their account, so it's no more chargebacks, it's directly into their budget.
Yeah, I think we're, because I'm seeing the amounts, I mean, it grew, so I figure that the amount is in there.
Yes, sir.
So could that be, that can't be a quarterly charge, it's probably, but I see the amount.
It's about a million dollars yearly.
Yeah, well over, so, but I commend you for now putting the full budgeted amount, and that's more trackable, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Moving on to item 3, Presentation of Bond Oversight Committee Members, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. I have received the list of the people that have been nominated, and I believe have accepted the nomination to be on our bond oversight committee. Once I present these names to the board, as official names, I will be contacting, my staff and I will be contacting them tomorrow, and then we will be sending them a letter, inviting them to the initial meeting, where we can get them together and start working on their bylaws and their organization, and so on and so forth. So it'll be right after the holidays, some of them have called me already, and I told them that right after the holidays, we'll be meeting. So I'll be sending those letters out, and I'll certainly be sending copies to the board members as to when the meeting dates, I'll keep the board members totally informed as to when the meeting dates are. And I'd like to announce them and who nominated them, and we'll start with Dr. Enrique Escobedo Jr., nominated Mariano Binayala in Silberio Capistrán. Mr. Herman Otis Powers nominated Joe Rivera and Jim Tipton. Mr. Pat Lehman nominated Ernesto De Leon and Dr. José Jiménez. Miss Susan Galván nominated José Gilial and Evaristo Gámez. Mr. Rolando Aguilar nominated Michael Rodríguez and Terry Ray. Mr. Joe Kalunga nominated Bush Barbosa and Arturo Farias. Mr. Ruben Cortés nominated Rick Seis and Nick Sarafi. And I, Superintendent, nominated Charles Hoskins, Larry Holzman, and Julián Pena.
Now, what's wrong with that picture? No females.
That's right.
Well, you nominated.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other, any comments from the board?
Say, I caught.
No? If not, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Moving on to item 4, Notification of Betterment Fund Change Orders and Contract Change Orders. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. We have only one change order, change order number 6 to Ben Bright Elementary. If you have any questions, either myself or Mr. Tapia will be glad to answer.
Questions, comments from the board?
Just to Ben Bright Elementary School, there's one change order, and that's in the, and it's not really a change order. We had an allowance for irrigation of $100,000. Once we got the total package bid out, it came out to be $128,700, so what we're doing is, we already had an allowance of $100,000, that stays there, and then we, out of a betterment fund that we have, we're taking $28,700 out of the betterment fund to put into the landscape allowance. That's the landscape in accordance to the needs of the, of the community out there, and city and county ordinances.
And the project's on?
We're moving in as we speak.
So it's on?
Yes, we will still have some, it will still have some outside work left over, some finish-up landscaping, and so on and so forth, but the kids should be ready to report to school there on the 9th when they come back, and teachers are already moving in right now.
Very good. And one question, well, no, I'll pick it up on committee, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, moving on to item B, Standing Board Agenda Items, number 5, Board Calendars, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. On the board calendar, just to make a few announcements, that on Wednesday is the last school day for children for the semester, and then on Thursday is the, is the last day for, for teachers, the teacher preparation day, and we're all off on Friday. And I hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday season. I wish everybody a good Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody concerned. And when we come back, I'm sure we'll be full of energy, and that everybody's going to come back with a lot of energy and ready to work, and our first day is the 8th for employees, the teachers, and that's the staff development waiver day, so we'll be having staff development all that day. The classes resume on Tuesday, the 9th. That's, I know that the newspaper said the 8th, but it's a correction, the classes resume on the 9th. We'll have new teacher in service on the 13th, that's on a Saturday, for any new teachers that have come in since, since this semester, anybody coming in new next semester. And we also have a, the following Saturday, we continue with a new teacher in service, a two-day in-service, but one of the most important days, and I wish everybody to circle it, very proud to have the BLA graduations on the 18th. We also have our community coffee, superintendent's community coffee for the Porter Cluster on the 18th at 9 o'clock in the morning at Porter High School at the Porter Auditorium, the brand-new auditorium that they have over there. So I invite all the parents from the Porter Cluster to be there. And other than that, in case you have any questions, we do have, we do not have a board meeting until the 16th of January, that's important to remember. We canceled the one on the 2nd due to the fact that nobody's going to be here on vacation, so we only have one board meeting in January, and that'll be January 16th. Any questions?
Questions, comments from the board?
Yes.
Mrs. Galvan?
I'd like to add a curriculum meeting on, in January.
Yes. We'd also like to, as far as we're there, we're going to do a couple, we're also looking, and board members, I'll be contacting you, but I'll let you know right now, I'd like to have a board workshop on the 13th to go over our goals and objectives, now that they're all printed out, and all the objectives are printed out, and just to recapture the first workshop, we have to renew all the AAs we'll be presenting, and we'd like to have it on the 13th. If there's any problems, let me know, and I'll still contact you right after we come back from the holidays, and we'll schedule that on the 13th, so it's on a Saturday morning, say from 9 to 12 on the board workshop, and we'll post that. A curriculum committee meeting, would you like to have that early January? 23rd? Okay, we'll, we'll schedule that, and we'll get it out. We also like to have a facilities committee meeting, because we really need to start working on getting architects for the construction, so I think it's Mr. Lehman, your chairperson for the facilities committee? We'd like to also have one in early January, if possible. We'll get together with you on that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. If no further comments, moving on to item 8, Public Audience. The next item on our agenda is a public comment period. This is a time for citizens, staff, and students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be printed during other portions of this meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and subject matter of your comments must appear on the signing sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will have, will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments. With all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constituted a complaint against an employee or officer of this district, I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed to the BISD formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, or GF Local. With those cautions in mind, I will not be glad to hear the general comments.
Dr. Escobedo?
Remember, you have five minutes to present, Mr. Sanz.
On that, just on your comment right now, there are apparently 11 audience members that have signed up for public audience, which maxes us out over our 30-minute time limit. My calculation indicates that it's about 2 minutes and 45 seconds per speaker, unless you want to make any other adjustments. unless you want to make any other adjustment.
Well, you'll help me enforce that time limit?
If that's, if that's the time limit you wish me to enforce, I will enforce it, or any other directive you may give as presiding officer of the meeting.
Yeah. Christmas holidays, okay, well, we'll spend an extra hour here listening to the public comments, so we'll give them five minutes. The first person, Dagoberto Barrera, a fair clean and bidding, a fair clean bidding process.
Dear Board, dear Board members, my friends, Superintendent Goncalitos, and my fellow Americans, we have had a bad reputation and image in South Texas for the corrupt dealings, wheelings, illegal drugs, killings, and among ill-repute people, and bribe by our public officials. Remember the ill-famous Sheriff Conrado Cantu serving time, TV Valencia County Commissioner Harlingen, Stark County Sheriff Jim Falcon, Judge Chaparizzi who died from cocaine, Ray Ramón who was indicted but found innocent trying to hire a killer to kill, County Commissioner Tom A. We have had a state local senator collecting lobbying fees to help the port, but he doesn't know a thing about the port activities. You know about two twenty-one million dollars spent for the bridge to nowhere. Where's the money? Is it in the Bahamas Islands, or in a freezer that a Florida congressman had stashed away? Now, here at BISD, a prospective school construction company took some of our board members to dine and wine at La Pampa Restaurant. His members were the following, Dr. Escobedo, Herman Powers, Susan Galván, and Pat Lehman.
Mr. Barrera, if you have a complaint, we do have policies that govern that. I think you've done this before, you heard me read the rules that preclude open forum. We know who we were, so just please continue.
All right, thank you. Why would a future school construction company take you out on an expensive date, unless that lobbyist wanted to, a closer relationship with you, or something from you in exchange for your vote? Four board members, four votes, that constitute almost a quorum, and a winning vote. Texas Open Meeting Act, in the book, is for a simp, for a specific purpose, to have open public meetings and stop these dealings behind the scenes, when public funds are involved and used. This is our tax money, people. They paid lobbyists, main, this paid lobbyist, main goal is to pay to buy your vote. You know it, I know it, and everybody knows it. It is viewed as hacking you in voting for a specific project, when that vendor picks up the tab, especially in an expensive restaurant. This is potentially damaging to a fair balance in the bidding process. This is contrary to the state's open records law. If it is not, it's unethical either way. When are we going to learn to have self-respect, have some shame for our wrong deeds, and develop a higher standard? Should I call you now, Honorable? I don't know. On my free meal, we will not discuss school bids, but keep in mind on Christmas, given as a school consultant, like Senator Tullucio, but you all can have a hamburger, fries, and a Coke, and not an expensive outing at the Pampa Restaurant. Thank you.
The next speaker, Beto Medrano, working together, compliance, I think.
Yes, sir, Beto Medrano, thirty-two years precinct chairman, so you all know, and I'm also the proud past president of AOB and TSDA, as my friend Alba Lilia alludes to, I'm very proud to have been and still a member of AOB and TSDA, since I joined the ranks twenty-one years ago. I have to apologize for a mistake that I made last board meeting. I pointed out that Grace DePain was number one, and Otis Powers, my friend, was number two, ever served on the board, because outstanding contributions, and I mean that sincerely. However, I left out a person that's really the godfather of school boards, all over the state of Texas, national committees, state committees, and I speak none other than Joe Rodríguez, five-years board member, so Otis, I think I'm going to have to go down to number two, these two people are tied. I'm glad I don't have to pick up a number one. And together with their advice, and seek their advice, they have a lot of experience, even Paul Hemphill has come to the meetings now, Randy Dunn comes all the way from San Antonio to run for office here while he lives over there, but it doesn't matter, because people look at Joe Cadiel, he lived over there, and, you know, outside City Limits, he's still running, and so, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as they want to be here, I guess. But I wanted to wish you guys, especially Dr. Escobedo and Ruben Cortés, the fact that you were anxious to run, or dedicated to run, especially Ruben Cortés, who has become a leader, is our city commissioner, Charlie Atkinson, wherever he goes, people follow him, and I think that, that he's an outstanding young man on his way to being whatever he wants to be in this city, along with you. I have gotten a lot of calls that said, have you seen and heard about Ruben Cortés? He's not a puppet, man, he's a leader, and you made the page yesterday's paper, that's what we want from young people. And Terry Ray alluded to the fact that Moses was here yesterday, and he said he's got two children, and he's coming back, I think that young man's coming back. And I don't want to mention names who went to that restaurant, Dagoberto, but I do want to mention that if you do want a Whataburger, just call me, I'll pay for it, one at a time, not this four-stuff, and if you want a real good meal, I'll take you next door, and I didn't put your name on the marquee, that you're coming with me. I even put Ruben and Dr. Escobedo, bring me a photo, and I'll put you there with an artist, you guys, you guys really deserve it. Joe Colunga, Joe, you better start coming to the meetings, people are thinking, running against you.
I was here last time, and you said I wasn't here.
I missed you.
I was here.
Okay, I apologize, you know, I'm blind or something. Pat, you've done a good job throughout the year, except you can never do the yea and nay, or both arms for doing a motion, but it's okay, we're going to teach you how to do the thing next time, when you become chair. And Otis, what can we say about you, always good for teachers, you're always good for PR, you're the man of the hour right now, and Dr. Escobedo, of course, he's here right now, because, God darn you, landslide. And of course, we all appreciate what the superintendent does, and we all stand behind you, I know AOB was highly praising you for this election, we're all happy. Susan Galván does an outstanding job all the time, we need females on the board, guys. The thing that you didn't understand last time, I was standing over here with, sitting over here with five beautiful ladies, five administrators, five people have done their job, and you still didn't pay attention to what I was telling you. You didn't get anybody for that board thing, oh, man, I'm telling, it's a disgrace, but we're not going to discuss about that, because it's Christmas time. Rolando Aguilar has done an outstanding job, by bringing this too, along with Ruben Cortés, bringing this thing May, it affects me personally, as I told you last night, but what can I say? You know, you guys have done an outstanding job, I'm not going to come up here and tell you what to do, but I do tell you that work together, work together, and like our new county judge, Carlos Cascos, work in unity, and we will prevail, we'll be the best school district and town, and the state of the valley. And please, folks, don't go eating any place sales, call me, I got enough money, with that pay raise, I got enough money to treat you guys, and over here, I can treat you for good shrimp, good fish. Ruben and Dr. Escobedo, you need to bring me a photo, I'm going to put you in the Hall of Fame, there, the Wall of Fame, and you'll be navigating a boat with full shrimp, and Ruben will be fishing. And we can't put there, Mr. Gonzalez, he's too big, and he's too tall, so...
Your time's up, Mr. Medrano.
So, thank you very much, and I, under the First Amendment rights, would greet you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, under the First Amendment rights, freedom of speech.
Thank you, Mr. Medrano. Our next speaker is Mr. Paul Hemphill, May election.
Yes, I'm here.
Sorry, Dr. Escobedo, for naming those people.
Abraham Lincoln once said, and is credited with having said, that every person he met could teach him something. Every person that he came into contact with knew something that he didn't know. So, I come before you as a non-resident of BISD, and of course, you don't have to listen to me, that's your choice, but I hope you will, and you're certainly under no obligation to listen to me. And I'm going to make this real short, because I set down into written form the points that I brought before y'all the last board meeting, in reference to the changing the election date back to May, and I added another reason, that was that my mother also taught in BISD at El Hardín and Russell Elementary, and I can remember as a small child, going to Russell Elementary even before I was public school age, and just being there with mom. And in summary, and make this short, Brownsville Independent School District, I owe a great debt to what, the blessings that I got from having been a, spending all my twelve years in public school, and graduating from Brownsville High School, and I have a sense of debt, and that's why I'm here, and that's why I come back, even though I do reside outside the district, because I owe a profound debt of gratitude that I cannot repay. The influence of my life, the administrators, the educators, the teachers, the coaches that blessed me, okay, and that's why I'm here. And insamation, you know what it means when a pastor says in conclusion? Nothing. But I just want to raise one other point that I didn't bring, bring out last time, and without naming names, that's not the protocol here, but I think it is outrageously self-serving and disappointing when any board member incumbent extends his term of office, because I believe there's a bond of trust between a trustee, and that's why we call it trustee, to extend their term of office beyond the term that which the public elected them to. And also, in listening to the policy committee meeting last night, I believe you're going to have to amend your local policy, because your term of office, I believe, is three years, if I heard right, Mike, in reference to the term of office, then I think you violated that local policy as well. But from the highest office to the local partisan precinct chairman, there's a lack of trust between the public and elected officials. And I want to see y'all go away to, go, in some measure, to restoring that trust by re-establishing the term of office, the three-year term of office that applies to up and down to all your members, and I would be very disappointed, if not surprised, that this matter's table today. I'll be very disappointed, and I guess we can live with my disappointment, but the public is concerned about the behavior and the actions of those to whom they have given their trust, and I encourage you to do the right thing, to go back to the May date, and I think that will, in some small measure, restore that trust that's been lost. And it's not, I'm not talking about you guys, I'm talking about between the public and every elected official, in every single level, national, state, county, local. And I do have copies of my comments, and I'll conclude, if you'll allow me to give them to Drew, and y'all can give your choice to listen to it or ignore it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrick Haynes, and he didn't really specify his subject matter.
Hamas, Dr. Escobedo, Hamas. Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, season's greetings. Just a follow-up to the policy meeting last night, which I thought was a very good meeting. Few things real quick, don't want to beat the same nail with the same hammer all over again as we did last night, but a couple of things. Again, going back to your board minutes of December sixth of last year, when you spoke about the issue of the election to begin with, I was a little surprised by your being surprised by the increase in the, in the election money, when you did have a board member last year who stated that it wasn't going to cost more than forty thousand, it was going to cost between sixty and eighty thousand, and by my math, it went up seventy-seven thousand. That board member was correct. Same board member also said that eight out of his ten constituents supported the May election, I believe that the eight out of ten is still correct, and hopefully that the board member will take his constituents into mind. There was another board member who said that if it could be proven that it was not feasible or worthwhile, that he would spearhead the lead back to the, to the May election, and I hope that after all the evidence has been presented, that board member will also take the initiative that he promised last year. On the money, one of the things we did not talk about last night was the fact on seventy-seven thousand dollars, and what does it affect? Okay, what does it actually buy you? It buys you two teachers, two first-year teachers. It buys you between seventy-five and seventy-seven computers for the classroom. Okay, those are just a couple of things that seventy-seven thousand dollars will provide for the students that we're expecting you to look after in the district. One of the other things that came up last night was the concern to the superintendent on how a May election may, may affect him, or the, or the constituency of it, and I truly believe that Superintendent Gonzalez, when he is in charge of seven thousand employees in a four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar election, a four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget, is more than capable of handling a change if there is one in election. If you're worrying about a change, or how it affects Superintendent Gonzalez, my recommendations would be for you to win your election. If you win your reelection, then you don't have to worry about change on the board. Let the committee, let the community have a say, or they want you to serve as the trustee, or not to serve as the trustee, as after the three years that you did serve. Finally, or actually in closing, I'm kind of like Mr. Hemphill, it might be, I actually be in closing, closing, but I'll try and wrap it up. I read last night to you about the, from the chapter one, district organization and management from the Texas School Performance Review of two thousand and three. I'm not going to reread it, okay? The part about public trust is a serious one, and I think Mr. Hemphill spoke well. I know that the pastor, who hopefully, I hope this goes to get up and speak again, spoke well. Terry Ray spoke well last night, the parent of the four small children spoke very well, and I know I cannot compare with them in their words. But when I was doing this on Sunday night, and I was trying to come up with a couple of words to present to you, and I came across this Texas School Performance Review, chapter one, I would recommend that you all print it out off of Google, and read the pages one through twenty-five on chapter one, because after looking at it, I'm wondering how much of change, or positive change, we've had in the last four years. So, revisit it, look at it, take it into consideration. Remember that the community, it seems, as a whole, or the majority last night, the vast majority last night, wants you to go back to the May election, re-establish the trust, and we're looking forward to working with whoever's elected onto the board, or re-elected. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mauro Ruiz, the subject is legal matters, hopefully not pending litigation, Mr. Ruiz.
Good evening, board members, Commissioner, Mr. Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen. It's not going to be a very pleasant stay for me right now, because I have something very important to discuss with this board, and this concerns the integrity of this body. You were sworn to uphold the Constitution and to oversee that your conduct will not violate the public trust that you sought to uphold. In a recent newspaper edition, I familiarized myself that some board members have violated the Texas Open Meetings Act. This is against the law. This is against the law. It's a sign of inappropriateness, and it questions the integrity of the board members. Board members should be addressed, just like school administrators. If there is a violation of the law, or we see some incorrectness of their conduct, they should be suspended immediately, immediately, until the competent authorities investigate this matter. In trying to search for the competent authorities... In trying to search for the competent authorities, we address the bond issue. There are monies that are directed to the Securities and Exchange Commission. Do they have to oversee this? Interstate commerce, does the federal government oversee this? The Attorney General of the State of Texas, because apparently 75% of these monies were to be paid by the state. This is a very naughty thing that you committed because now you're going to have to pay for it, sir, like everybody else. We uphold you to the highest standard. And I am here representing the people that are not able to attend meetings. I am not here for any benefit or for any gain personally. I am here to see that the two items are factors that address democracy or address, and this oversight and accountability. I hold you responsible for the action that you took, and you violated the trust of the I, as a private citizen and a taxpayer of this political entity, request that the members in question be placed on suspension until an investigation by the competent authorities is addressed. I will appoint myself and select a committee to oversee the investigative unit that will have jurisdiction on subject matter from the five districts representing the city of Brownsville and its constituency. 75% of these bonds, being the responsibility of the State of Texas, we need for the Attorney General, Texas Attorney General, come into the picture. Concerning corruption, in Sunday's newspaper, the United States Attorney for the District, Southern District of Texas, should be notified. Misuse and abuse of funds, the Securities and Exchange Commission should be notified. If the board decides to discuss this issue amongst themselves in executive section, I recommend this be addressed immediately. Since you will no longer have a quorum, the meeting should be adjourned. But you, my friends, do not belong here any longer. You are supposed to be suspended. We have to carry the law like it's supposed to. No exceptions. No one is beyond the law. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Our next speaker is Victor Alvarez, May election.
Thank you, board. Yesterday, I came and spoke as the pastor of a Baptist church that's been in Cameron Park for 28 years. Tonight, I would like to speak on, as president of UPCP. UPCP is an organization, stands for United for the Progress of Cameron Park. And one of our goals there is the education of children. And as a matter of fact, last year, we gave away almost $12,000 in scholarships to kids that graduated from the school system in Cameron Park. We're very concerned with the drop-off rate that we have because a lot of those kids involve Cameron Park. I have no political agenda. I have no, I have no political agenda. People have asked me many times, what would you be if you were not a preacher or be a millionaire? Because there's enough stupid people out there to rip off, and there's enough money to be made if you work. So I have nothing against any of you. I'm not here endorsing any of you. I'm here with a concern about what I think... You know, we use words and we throw them out there and scare people, but you know, politics is a polite way of doing business. That's what politics are for. It's a polite way of getting along. I told you last night how we could fix the problem. We just go out in the bush the way it used to be done. But that's what politics is. And at times, like I said yesterday, some of, sometimes the meetings here are second only to the WWF. And that is sad. And you know, I think that one thing we need to do is, we make mistakes. We all make mistakes. It's so easy to judge somebody for where they were, what they did. It's very easy. You know, I showed up at home today with a lipstick on my cheek. You know, my wife didn't know any better. She said, "Where have you been?" She knows better. A lot of people kiss me. But I think that one of the things that we need to do is, it's called humility. Call humility. We really need a big dose of humility. We've seen it work. There was a man that ran for an office here a while back. He had no chance of winning. He started walking down the street with a flag. Hey, he almost... As a matter of fact, he won the popular vote that day because people like humility. The public's looking for some humble servants. There's another guy here that won, just won not too long ago, and he pinched himself. He couldn't believe he won. So he went and stood in a corner and put a sign, and never said, he said, "Thank you." You know what he's winning? He's winning people over because he's being humble. If we move this back, it's going to affect some of you. So what? Be humble. Bite the bullet. Somebody might help you win now if you bite the bullet. Why have another enemy? Make a friend. Take it back. Why? Because you never should have taken it in the first place. Then after you take it back, now let's bring it out on a referendum to the voters. Let the voters decide. Well, they're saying, well, if the voters decide, pastor, by the time BISD plans all these meetings and bites the sweet bread and the coffee, hey, let me help you. I'll find four, I'll find four places in this city big enough for you to help the meeting. We'll buy the bread. Who's we? We the people that go there. You know, it don't have to be complicated. We can simplify it real... It don't have to take six months to fix the problem. But the best way to fix it, let's go back now, today, and let's try at it again. I could care less if it's three or four years personally. There's pros and cons to both sides, but it needs to be brought out, and the people must be convinced why it should be four years instead of three. Just convince us. But for the sake of peace, of harmony, of trying to work for the children, what do we lose by taking it back? Let's just take it back. So you ain't crow. That ain't crow. It's called humility. People honor that humility. It's priceless these days. Honesty. Humility. That word integrity, that's another word. We don't even know what integrity means no more. It's just a word we use during election time. Get a Webster dictionary. Just a little bit of humility. I'm not as smart as I think I am. I don't know everything I ought to know. I'm doing the best I can. And in closing, and I will close because you should, preachers should not lie. I'll invite three of you at a time to stake because, man, someone ought to feed you. This is a rough job you all have to do. There's nothing wrong with eating out with somebody. Three at a time, I pay the state. Lord bless you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Orlando Trevino, general comments.
My name is Orlando Carlos Trevino. I think everybody knows me, okay? I heard two people speak because this is not really my concern. I know what my concern is. I had two people mention Las Pampas. I know for a fact that two of the board members were sitting there. They had been sitting there and talking and stuff like that. As soon as the other, as soon as the rest of the party came in, one of the board members acknowledged everybody and walked out. So get your facts straight, okay? But that's neither here nor there. So whenever you make a statement, make sure you've got the correct statement and don't go on hearsay. Second of all, the Brownsville Herald wrote an article, 19 schools not making the grade. One is at stage two. Stage two, getting to the federal, once it hits stage three, we're going back to the same problem. The feds can take over it. That means sanctions, not only by the feds, but also by the state. That means millions and millions and millions of dollars. And me, if I was an educator, administrator, classified person, I'd be worried about losing those monies because I would know that I'm not going to get raises and I'm not going to better my benefits, okay? And the Brownsville Herald pointed it out. It amazes me. Former board members, educators, a pastor, everybody talking, and not one person talked about this Friday article. It really amazes me. I love this school district. I've been speaking on it for 10 years. Nobody loves it more than I do. Nobody cares more for the employee and the student than I do because I've been speaking for all of y'all. When people are more worried about politics than election, it bothers me because we got over 19,000 kids in problems. If those schools don't meet federal standards, the state is going to come in because they're going to be reprimanded by the feds as to why they're not policing their own school districts in Texas. I see all, everybody that runs for the school board. I see the signs and the little yellow buses and children, children come first. But I haven't seen none, I have not seen one person address this, that newspaper. This came out Friday. They had a policy meeting yesterday, but this, prior to it coming out in the paper, there should have been a curriculum meeting. Next, the superintendent, superintendent's got a very few months to try and clear up this problem. He's got a great administrative staff. He's got great employees. But all the educators and everybody should be working with this superintendent, who's an excellent superintendent, trying to clean up somebody else's mess and saying, hey, what can we do? We got 19 schools in trouble. What can we do? We'll give you all the support. And that includes all board members. And board members that do not want to participate in that way shouldn't be on that board. Because if you're going to knick-knack about every little thing, but you're not talking about this, you're not talking about this? I didn't hear one person mention this. And we had educators, we had past educators, we had everybody. I mentioned it yesterday. The only reason I wasn't here for the last board meeting to mention it about the problems is because I was in California with my kids. But I guess it does take for me to get back and really open your eyes because, I mean, we got a lot of people that are going to be affected by this. We got a lot of people. Lastly, who else is going to get affected if there's sanctions by the state and federal? Because there's going to be monies lost. That means that taxpayer, I don't like getting my tax rate, but if I get, if the school district gets sanctioned, somebody's got to supplement the lost income. That means the taxpayer. Now you as a board, the only means you should have is with a superintendent to see what kind of help you can do for him. Give him all the tools he needs to get these 19 schools back on par. And now, to end it all, I don't know if I mentioned it before, these are the holidays. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year because I always do this every year. I want everybody here safe. I prefer fighting with you and arguing with you than seeing something happen to you. But one thing, remember as a board, you're not here to argue, you're not here to fight. You're here to work together. And I heard all these promises, I can work with everybody. I'm not seeing that. Work with a superintendent, that's the one that needs the help because he's cleaning up somebody else's mess. Cleaning up somebody else's mess. Now give him the support. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, and I hope I can read this correctly, is it Vicky Bunderson, May election? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's all right. People mispronounce my name all the time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent Gonzalez. My name is Vicky Bunderson, and I know I am becoming a familiar face up here. I'm not originally from Brownsville, but I have been a member of the adjunct faculty at UTB since I arrived here in 1992, and I have been a full-time English teacher at Hannah since the spring of 2003. My children attended Egley, Olivera, and Hannah. I was an activist parent. I am becoming an activist employee. I will always be an adamant voter. I spoke last night, and I would like to offer some refutation to a number of the points made then and also tonight. One gentleman said that the November vote should take effect only with new members. Because you all have staggered terms, that is not quite possible. Someone is bound to be cheated out of their last six months, and/or someone else will get an extension of six months. But you're not paid. It's not like that money that would go to a salary is coming out of our pockets. And it seems that this past November, a start was made with new November terms for the newly elected. Another gentleman claimed he wanted to make sure you all could be held accountable for what you do. Because the budget process takes place over the summer, the November election also takes care of that. As I said yesterday, in May, board members may be voted in based on promises made. In November, you will be voted out based on promises broken. Someone else said the choice should be brought before the people. Of course, and they said that tonight as well. That brings up the question of when and how. Is that going to be a May referendum or one in November? Except it would seem that this past November, we did get the answer from the public on that. According to the Herald, nearly 18,000 votes as compared to only seven and a half or so the previous May. So in November, we got more votes than we had done for how many years prior to this put together? As I'm sure you know, even many BISD employees call this place the Crystal Palace. Under the previous superintendent, it was becoming known as the Glass Fortress. The perception of the public is, as I said last night, that you're, you want your own way and you want to limit the vote. I know I'm a lone voice in here, but the more difficult you make it for people to vote, the more we perceive that you went, oh, no, 18,000 votes. And it costs so much money to run in that election, and now we, there's no way that we can control 18,000 votes. So my point again is that democracy succumbs to dictatorship to the extent that the vote can be limited or controlled. I want it kept in November. And I think that you guys can be held more accountable for what goes on over the summer, over that budget, when you have to face election in November than when you're facing it in May. Thank you. Good night and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Our next speaker, George Borrego, elections passed, Thanksgiving pay raise, level four.
Somebody left me a pen. AOB-E supports the election being moved back to May. And sometimes you have to look at quality instead of quantity. Yesterday, I was unable to speak because I had a minor family emergency, nothing major, but I did have to leave. But I noticed the amount of people here. And when you consider that not everybody talks for themselves, it's usually one in 100. So there were about 70 people here yesterday, which would be representing about 7,000 people. There weren't 170 people here representing 17,000 people. Because those 70 people are the ones that care about our educational system. Those other 10,000, because it was there, voted. Did they know the issues? Did they know the individuals? Who knows? But the 7,000 that make the effort to go out in a May election know the issues, know the candidates, and move the election the way it should be moved. So please put it back. And not to mention the $80,000 that we'll be saving can be used for the holiday that is going to be given to the staff that works on Friday. It happens to... It happens to cost about $79,000. Thank you administration, Mr. Pineda, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Gonzalez, for making that effort so that our people can take Thursday and Friday off in Thanksgiving. Also, thank you for the Padas instrument evaluation tool that is going to allow our principals to be instructional leaders for our children, for our teachers, and relieve them of that annual Padas evaluation instrument. It's going to be, I believe, every four years. That should be coming up in January. Thank you for that. The Association of Brownsville Educators will also support an equity increase for the Level Four administrators. There are some principals that are making less than teachers, but they work a lot harder. And I'm not saying teachers don't work hard because I'll be slapped around so silly, you won't recognize my face again. But I know that the administration works very hard, and they need that justification, that equity pay increase. We support Mr. Gonzalez as our superintendent. He is already coming up with initiatives that indicate his concern for our kids. The dropout committee is a fantastic idea. I think it's going to work, and at least it's an effort that we are making towards that. How many people are dropping out? Nobody knows because the figures are all skewed. But we support you, Mr. Gonzalez. And finally, we, the Association of Brownsville Educators, would like to wish all our members, all the school district employees, all the people listening on TV, for a happy new year, a very safe and merry Christmas. Thank you.
Next speaker is Moises Gonzalez, and there is no subject matter to be discussed.
Trustees, Ms. Calvane. Good evening, Ms. Moises Gonzalez. I'll introduce myself again. I am a parent, I'm a BISD parent. I have, I'm a legal guardian of a 17-year-old who's in high school. I have a six-year-old who's in first grade. I have a three-year-old and a two-year-old who will be part of BISD in the near future. I'm here today to speak, there's lots of items that were brought up, and yes, there are items that are of extreme importance, things that are going on in our school district, but I'm here to speak today about an item that is at hand, that the vote, that the board will, the board will vote on soon. Elections were moved without consent of the BISD taxpayers or voters. Plain and simple. There's no way around that. I personally believe that for the entity of four board members to unilaterally move there and extend their terms is not, is not right. It's not ethical. Mr. Aguilar hit the nail, hit the nail on the head yesterday when he said, whether the law allows you to do it or not is not the question. The question is, is whether the behavior is ethical or not. As public servants, you are held to a higher standard. As public servants, you have to live your life beyond reproach, not only personally, personally and professionally. Moving the elections to November caused the BISD elections to be overshadowed by more popular elections, and that's plain and simple. We saw that we had a very popular county race. I personally saw the ballot being offered, number one, on a separate ballot, which ensued more cost to the district. Number two, was being offered as an option to the election. I saw that. Would you like to vote for this election? People opted to do it, some, some people didn't. I observed that. Was it done in all cases? No, I can't say that, but that's what I observed. I think we've received information, we've seen, we've seen what the figures have cost. The election was more expensive. It was more expensive, plain and simple. It's hard to argue with the numbers, the numbers are there. It was more expensive due to that. Ms. Calvane, you, you mentioned that, you know, one of your, one of your, one of your tactics was to try to combat voter apathy. But when you combat voter apathy with, with blind voting, it, it doesn't substitute. It doesn't combat the apathy. Someone mentioned previously, when voters come out in May, in May elections, they come out to vote on the issues that affect Brownsville, our local elections, nonpartisan, nonpolitical elections. And this is a nonpartisan, nonpolitical, non-paid position, and should be kept with those other positions in a May election. Having to compete with partisan politics, that's part of the problem we have on this board in the school district. You know, our school board requested a review from our comptroller, and one of the first things that she said was, one of the problems is we have to get rid of politics in our school board. Politics, both internal and external. And moving the elections to November just adds to that problem. Elections in November make it financially difficult for a local person or other people who are interested in improving their school district to participate. You have to compete on a financial level with people who are running for county, people who are running for state, people who are running for federal. You have to compete for, for vendors of, of advertisement, you have to compete for facilities, you have to compete for everything, and you're overshadowed. To turn an election into a financial race is wrong. Moving the elections is not the answer, again, to voter apathy. We were, we were, when we were, when, when you, all of you have had experience, when you were out there to ask for the vote, also, it was mentioned that, well, we had a public forum. We invited the people to come, and only two people showed up, and we're disappointed the people aren't interested. You know, to come up here and speak is not easy. It's intimidating. It's intimidating to me. Sit up here in the, in the microphone, the TVs, the cameras, the people, everybody watching you, it's intimidating, it's hard to do. We weren't afraid, and US elected officials were not afraid to go out to the people and ask for their vote. Don't be afraid to go out there and ask for their opinion. They supported you, you went out there, interacted, do the same thing. Take it to them. They deserve that. That's what you're elected for, and that's what you're here for. You represent the future of our children, and, and our children represent the future, and that's not a cliche. I think as a board, you should be the example for all governing bodies.
Sir, your time is up. Would you please wrap up your comments?
Thank you, Dr. Suelo. And I've never been here, just allow me a little bit more.
It's closing statement.
Okay. I'm part of a generation that's coming up, that's going to be involved, that's looking, listening, and remembering what your actions are, both personally and professionally, and we will, will hold you accountable for it. We strive, we strive to ask our campuses and administrators to be exemplary. We ask them to be recognized, and I challenge you to be recognized. I challenge you to remember the meeting back on December the 20...
Your time is up, sir. You're breaking the rules.
Just come on, doctor, just give me a second. You can give me that second if you want.
Well, you know, I, everyone else has the same time limits, so we really need to stop the...
Just, I'm sorry, in closing, and I will close, December 6th, Mr. Suelo, you said you'd spearhead an initiative if you found the evidence that to reverse it. I, I, I challenge you to do that. Mr. Powers?
Okay, sir, sir, your time is up.
I challenge you to also stand by your statement back in that, that you would also vote for the people. And thank you.
That concludes our public comment period.
I apologize, apologize for taking up the time. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item nine, closed meeting. The board now goes into closed session as pursued to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 and 551.082. Board now goes to closed session.
Mr. Suelo?
Yes, sir.
I have one comment. Just, I, I would like, some news came to me, and so the public understands, there was a misrepresentation of the cost of the election last night, and I guess you let me know, Mr. Gonzalez, that final payment hasn't been made. Is that correct? Or, I question that, so...
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, board members, I, I did check into it. I know it was made by Ms. Pena that we had made final payment, and when I checked on it this morning, I was, I'm not aware of it, and no, final payments have not been made.
So we're back on the floor.
It comes back to the board, and it'll come back to the board on the 16th.
We'll discuss that, so we can't count our chickens yet.
Final payments will, and final invoices will come to the board.
And we did, by, by scrutinizing that, we did get a rebate last, last election. We are frugal with our money and, and, but we do want equal and transparent representation.
Chairman, the board now goes to a closed session. The board reconvenes after closed session. Moving on to item seven, board action on Level Grievance Three, Maribel Martinez, crank complaint number 007-06/07. Do I have a motion? Mr. Aguilar?
Dr. Suelo, I would like to move that this grievance is sent to the administration.
I have a motion by Mr. Aguilar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Calvane. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, please let the record reflect on A7 that I would know, I was not in, in closed meeting, nor did I deliberate.
Mr. Powers abstaining. Everyone else was a yes. Mr. Colunga, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item 10, consent agenda. Okay. Earlier this meeting, when we were approving the agenda, the order of day was changed. Item number 33 was brought up to be discussed now. Because item 33 does involve employees and/or officers of the, of the district, it can be, it should be discussed in closed session unless there is a permission, verbal permission from all the parties involved that it can be discussed in open session. At this time, I will ask if any of the board members object to having item number 33 discussed in open session. In open session. Nobody... Mr. Colunga?
I would, I would prefer to leave the content of the item in closed session in, in view of the most recent discussion leading to the preparation of the agenda, to leave it in closed session.
Okay, well, because there has been one member that has objected to discuss it in open, we must then bring it to closed session. With that in mind, the board, Mr. Powers?
Yeah, let me have legal interpretation. But he put it on the agenda. How can he speak on our behalf? I didn't say his name. I said he.
It depends on where the discussion goes, Mr. Powers, okay? If the discussion is going to be, as it appears to be, about four board members in a quorum, then those four have the, the right to discuss the matter in open session. Okay? However, if there is going to be any complaint against anyone of, anyone else, all right? Whether it be Mr. Colunga or anyone else, then if that is, that's going to constitute a complaint against that individual, then that individual at that point has the right to say that constitute a complaint against me.
Right.
And I would like to discuss it in closed session. Constituting a complaint against an officer or employee of the district. As what's on the table right now, that's, you know, I, I would recommend you all, if the four of you want to do that, go ahead and do that. If at any time it appears that, that some of the comments are going to constitute complaints, then at that point, that other board member can raise that issue and has the right to take it into closed session.
And the reason why I, I prefer an open, because I have been challenged my integrity and my independence from any group or individual. And, and since I was never notified by the Herald, I think I have, I have an opportunity to respond to it, even though they haven't printed my letter to the editor. And, and this is the first time in my nine years that I've seen something like this put on agenda by certain board members. And, and I'm here to, to stand up for my rights. I don't know about my other colleagues.
I think it's an open session also because I'd like the public to hear my, my side too.
Can I interject, Mr. Powers? I don't, I don't, I think, I don't know who, who does not want to, to have transparency, and I think all of us would like to have that, but I think we've been cautioned. Now, we can take it into executive session, come back and still discuss because it is discussion and possible action, correct?
Anything that you all want to do, basically...
I would be willing to satisfy Mr. Colunga's, and he put it in because he might want to discuss certain things in executive session, but I am coming out and discussing this. That is my prerogative, because that's the way, and, and, and I just want to caution that the agenda item is very generic.
Yes, sir.
It is not specific. And I caution this board to be very careful. Okay? So I would, I would grant Mr. Colunga's wish, but I reserve the right to discuss this after closed meeting in open forum if that's need be.
If, if that's what you all agree on, that's, that's fine. There's no...
Any, any other, I guess, you know, all agree to discuss this in open session. Originally with Mr. Colunga and Mr. Cortez, which both submitted very similar agenda items, they were placed in open session somewhat adamantly. After discussing with the council and superintendent, we did agree that it was in the best interest in order to prevent possible litigation to discuss it in, in closed session. But then comes the question of, you know, openness and transparency. There's a lot that needs to be said, that needs to, that the public needs to know about so that they don't have the wrong impression of what actually happened. For that reason, I do believe that this should be discussed in open session, as you first submitted the items, sir, Mr. Colunga, in open session. So we'll discuss in open session. If we do feel that it is leading towards possible litigation, then then we'll immediately go into closed session. But we do need to have this publicly so that the people, the persons, the, the public does not have a misconception of what actually happened. With that in mind, we will move on to consent agenda. Item number...
We've got to take item 33, I guess.
33, you need to read item 33.
Okay, we'll go item 33 first, and then consent agenda. You know, it's been circled anyway, so it doesn't really matter. We're now taking item number 33, discussion, possible action, and call for investigation of reported meeting of board quorum and vendor. Comments from the board, Mr. Colunga?
Okay. In the, the interest of public awareness of what happened, the agenda item is in relation to a newspaper article that appeared December 10th with a headline of BIS trustee treated by vendor rep. And mainly for the, the public to, to know what happened or what the facts were, I just wanted to ask the question of, number one, were the trustees mentioned in the article there with a vendor? And whether the, the story is reporting the facts?
Those are your two questions?
Yeah.
Comments?
Board?
Mr. Saldana, can you please state the law that board members have with vendors, please?
Respect to...
As a school board member, what can we do with vendors? In other words, if they invite us to eat or if they...
Law of quorum, I guess.
Yeah. What, can you please state the law? What are, are, what, what have we, what...
A, a board member may accept certain gratuities, meals, limited forms of entertainment from vendors so long as it's, that the vendor is present at the time that, that this is occurring, okay? That's one issue, one issue only. There's also another issue of the value, and, and then that puts certain requirements on the vendor, not necessarily on, on the, on the board member. But certain entertainment can be provided to board members.
Did we break any law?
Well, I'm sorry?
Did we break any law?
Ma'am, I don't know if you...
If we had a meal with a vendor, would that be breaking a law?
I don't know, ma'am. I, I don't, I can't, that's a, that's a fact call, okay? And I do not know what the facts, I have no knowledge, firsthand knowledge of the facts, and it would be inappropriate for me to make that call.
But you go out to eat with a vendor as a board member. I need to know this.
Now, well, you, you can ask me a hypothetical question.
With a, with a vendor, can I do that?
Can you?
Yes.
Individually?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, you could.
Thank you.
You could do that.
I have, just to follow up on what Mr. Saldana has been, has mentioned, I have been to numerous conferences, numerous workshops by TASB, by TA, in which they say that there's actually unlimited entertainment, Mr. Saldana. actually unlimited entertainment, Mr. Saldana, that the price of the entertainment is irrelevant so long as a vendor is present. You know, meals, every, we, we meet with dinners and meals with, with vendors every time we go to, to a conference, for example, sometimes multiple times a day, with TASB right there to our side and TA right there at our side. Uh, so this is nothing new. I have been at meals with vendors with every person in this board, with the exception of Mr. Cortez. And I'm sure that once we have the first conference, you know, he will be also partaking this. But with every member, with the person that submitted this agenda item, I have been at a table eating with a vendor, okay? Any other comments or questions from the board?
Well, I just want to allude, that is chapter one seventy-six, art, specifically a section one seventy-six point zero zero three that you're quoting. And yes, other than gifts or food, lodging, transportation, or entertainment accepted as a guest. So that, that is clear. Uh, also, uh, we move to five five one one forty-three of the government code. It's more even stricter. Doesn't talk about a quorum. A member of a group, of members of a governmental body commits an offense if the member of a group of members knowingly conspires to circumvent this chapter by meeting in numbers less than a quorum. What does that mean? Three, two. I'm just saying, you're the attorney. So if we're going to cast stones, I don't think, I think all of us are guilty. Mr. Cortez, Thursday night, what happened? Were you there?
Thursday night.
Yeah, Thursday night. Let me, let me get the invitation. I'll give you specific dates. So we've got to be very cautious. We are a body corporate, we are a team of eight, sir. We work as a team. Specific Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand and six, seven a.m. to ten p.m., sir. You were there. The attorney was there, and we had, so I will leave it at that.
If I may, Mr. President?
Mr. Cortez?
You know, at, at that particular event, uh, I received an invitation that was sent by the board runner to my house, inviting me to a Christmas party, which I showed up with, showed up to alone, mind you, and I saw Mr. Lehman sitting there with, I guess, Mr. Inhosa and, Raymond Inhosa and Susan Galvano. I saw our board attorney over there.
Galvano wasn't there yet.
When I got up?
And let's please be careful with the third parties.
Yes.
Well, I remember speaking with the board attorney, and I said, I said, greeted him, said hello. And a couple minutes later, I see another board trustee's pickup truck pulling into the parking lot. Not knowing, not having been to these ethics classes like you ladies and gentlemen have been and been already trained in this, and in recent, in light to recent events with this, the appearance of improprieties with this, this said dinner at La Pampa, I took it upon myself to walk out. I remember I made a reference to our board counsel.
It was not La Pampa.
I'm sorry?
It was not La Pampa, that's okay. I wouldn't name anything, but go ahead. I don't, I wouldn't include any third party.
Let's not, this is framed from third parties.
Well, I remember I spoke with him, and I said, we've got another person that I just see pulling into the parking lot. And to avoid any improprieties, I think I should walk out. And so as I'm walking out, one foot out, one foot in, me and this other board trustee are walking in, and he says, what are you doing? I said, I'm going home. I said, we're about to have a quorum here, and, you know, not knowing fully what, what is right and what is wrong, because I haven't been to these trainings like you, like you, like you all have, I decided to walk out. And so as said trustee is walking in, I'm walking out, and I left.
Well, I think we had a?
Because of an invitation that was allowed by the board runner to be sent over to my house.
Just like Mr. Powers got up and left too, as soon as Mrs. Galvano. But this is conspiracy. But if you must pass judgment, then we're all guilty, sir. Mr. Aguilar, we've been there, we've been to Garcia's. Third party name again, but that's a foreigner, they can sue us, I guess, I don't know. But we, we all guilty, if that's the case, as presented. But I don't think technically the perception is something that the public will have to give. But I caution all these board members to the government code, title five, five five point one forty-three. And I will, Norma, can you make a copy of this?
Mr. Aguilar? Well, before, you know, as you, just to follow up on what you said, Mr. Cortez, you right when you say that you haven't been to the trainings and conferences that we've been to, and that's why I respectfully recommend that before you, you know, place agenda items against us, that you go through some of these trainings, and that, that way you have an opportunity to learn by the experts that a lot of this really isn't as bad as you might think right now. Mr. Aguilar?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I, I do remember that. It was two and a half years ago, that right after our board meeting, our former superintendent invited all the board members to Garcia's. And let me tell you, first and last time I ever went with you guys to Garcia's. Thank you.
No, but we've been to other, we've been to other places, you know?
Referenced to what you said, Garcia's.
Right, well, that's only one out of many. Mrs. Galvano?
Yeah, Dr. Escobedo, that's why I, I fiercely wanted our lawyer to, to quote the law, because I wanted the public to know that, well?
Let, let her finish her comment, and then I'll, I'll address you.
Because I know, Mr. Cortez, you have not been to the training. And when we go to conferences, we have a gigantic floor with vendors, and we bring back fantastic ideas. We bring back how to build buildings, better air conditioning systems. We walk around that, that floor and, and bring back a lot of good ideas for our district. And we know the law. We, we know what we can do and what we cannot do, and we have been trained. And I do regret that that was in the newspaper. We did nothing wrong.
Mr. Saldana?
No, nothing here.
Okay. And just to follow up on Mrs., what Mrs. Galvano says, not only do we not want to break the law, but the vendors do want to break the law. They're not going to risk a hefty contract because they were, because they broke a law. So neither party here wants to be guilty of breaking the law. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Escobedo. You know, uh, like I said, I, I've been on this board nine years, and I know what is right and what is wrong. When, when we start losing focus of what we're really are, what we're really about, and that, to me, should be curriculum and instructions. And I wasn't mad that your board members placed agenda, I was hurt. Because now one of you guys called me and asked for my opinion, what really happened. And that hurt me more than anything else, because I would never do that to any of you guys. I have a problem, or if I think I see something, I'm gonna notify you, hey, guys, did you hear about this? I'm not gonna try and embarrass this board, this district, because we have to stay focused on what is best for BID as a whole. We can't lose, we can't lose track because you hate me, or I hate you, or I didn't vote for you, I didn't vote for you. That's not what it's all about, guys. When we get elected, we all have family, we all have friends, and we all have constituents. But I'm gonna tell you something about politics. When you get elected, you represent everybody. You, you represent the people that didn't vote for you, and you represent the people that did not go out and vote. And we have to look at everything from here on out, what's best for us. I did send a letter to the editor on December fourteenth. I did email him, I even had delivered it, my uncle did, to set the record straight. And I'm gonna read what I wrote. But, but like I said, I'm gonna hit it on the nail. What hurts me the most, you guys didn't call me and tell me what happened. A vendor notified you guys, and you ran with it. And that hurts, because I'm not that way. I know what I can do and what I cannot do. I know how to bend, but not break. And I'm gonna say what I said to the Herald. And I don't know why they haven't printed, and it goes beyond, but I'm not gonna go out there and, and, and tell them to do it, they, that's their job. And this is what I wrote. And I, when I say blank, I'm not gonna say the name, and I'll say, I'm not gonna say the vendor I spoke to, uh, that was there before I got there. And here's what I said, to set the record straight. I understand perception is very important. Let's set the record straight. I was never told about the dinner at La, at La Pampa. I called Dr. Escobedo, Dr. Escobedo about a personal matter the evening in question. Dr. Escobedo asked me to come to blank for a few drinks. While I was being seated, I saw blank, blank, an agent for blank, blank. I don't want to get anybody in trouble. And I greeted them with, how's your family? How's the family? And Merry Christmas. They were on a separate, uh, table. From that point on, Dr. Escobedo told me he was meeting some people from McAllen after eight p.m. Uh, I continued talking with Dr. Escobedo, and when the parties arrived, I greeted the individuals. I did not order a dinner. I, I left immediately upon seeing that a quorum might form, just like you did, Mr. Cortez, when you left that party. So you should have respected me by calling me. The following day in the morning, the next day, and you can confirm it, and Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Saldana, I went to you guys, and I said, I went to the superintendent office and noted, notified him of occurrence at blank, blank. Also informed the board attorney in person. I never knew what board members were on the committees until the next regular board meeting. I did not ask to be put on the facility, but I know what I can do. But the most important thing, thing the board has done is to develop a citizen bond committee with two members placed by board members and three by the superintendent to help with the hundred and thirty-five million bond issue. I was very surprised that the Herald did not call me about the issue. I do follow BISD policy, B A A legal, school board powers and duties, and BBF local board members ethics. I refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governance procedures. And I stand on my integrity and my independence from any group or individuals. Have always had an open door policy with any group or individual. Sorry for any misunderstanding in this matter, respectfully submitted. I sent that in, guys. But for us to be sitting here discussing an issue that is irrelevant, because we know what we can do. And once you get elected, folks, we are a team of eight, not a team of four, a team of three. And I've always said, since I've been on this board for nine, nine years, I'm independent. I don't count to four, and I don't count to five, I count to eight. And that's what I believe in, folks. So it does hurt me. I'm saddened by the, this, this matter, and I, and I've known Mr. Colunga for a long time, I've always supported him, but it hurt me when you guys didn't call me. And I'm, and I've always preached this to everybody on this board, and this is one of my mottos, I learned this from my dad. Coming together is the beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success. And the day we start doing those things, folks, we move forward. And that's what I believe in. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. One of the public audience speakers really made sense. We listened to public audience for out and over an hour, and everybody spoke about election dates and vendors. Uh, we never spoke about the children, the test scores, curriculum instruction, and children should be our first priority. The school board should be simple, should be about children. Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Cortez?
If I may ask legal?
Sure.
Mr. Saldana, uh, can you enlighten us on, on the, the Open Meetings Act, or, I'm sorry, not the Open Meetings Act? With regards, let me tell you what, what I'm trying to say. With regard to meeting in a quorum with potential vendor, not already doing business in a district, what, what does it say specifically with regards to that?
To answer your question, Mr. Cortez, it doesn't say anything specifically as to that, okay? What the law says is that four, four members of, or a quorum of a governmental body cannot meet, uh, in a situation where that meeting has not been properly posted, and there is a discussion of school business or governmental business, whatever the entity may be. It doesn't necessarily have to be in a restaurant, it doesn't, it could be in a person's home. Uh, it could be out on the beach.
It can be email, it can be phone calls.
It could, there are, there are situations where if four board members are chatting together, you can be in four different cities, but if you all are online at the same time, exchanging communication and talking about business, that could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. What you, what's happening here is that we're mixing two different things. We're, we're mixing vendors and we're mixing open meetings, all right?
If I may, the one?
That's two different things. One's an ethical issue, the other one's an ethical issue, but on a, on different laws. Because there's a whole different set of laws that apply over here, there's a whole different set of laws that apply when you're talking about strictly open meetings. Your, your question was a mix of both, and that's why my response is, it doesn't reflect that. The law simply says, if you meet four or more, discuss business, uh, carry out any governmental function, you have not properly posted that meeting, then you're in violation of the law.
I guess my, my next question would be to superintendent. Yes, I was at a Christmas party that I was invited, invitation that was delivered to administration. I'm assuming every trustee was invited to this event. I'm just wondering, was there an invitation to the other meeting that was reported in the Herald that we did not get? Was this also, in other words, was there a, a Christmas party in place that maybe administration did not forward all invitations to? I, I mean, I showed up to something because administration delivered a packet to my home. And when I saw a fourth person driving in the parking lot, I recognized the vehicle, I saw a red flag, and my mind says, you know, I, I'd just rather not be in that position, so I decided to walk out. But I'm wondering, with regards to this other event that, that I, I was not at, that came out in the Herald on, on December tenth, was an invitation given to the district to hand out to all trustees and, you know, council, superintendent, or anybody else?
If I may, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board, to answer your question, Mr. Cortez, any mail is addressed to any specific board member, we honor that, and we send it right on through to, to the board member. A lot of people don't know how to get to board members as far as invitations is concerned. So when any type of correspondence, that's my responsibility and legal obligation. If anybody sends anything addressed to a board member, we don't even open it. It's against the law.
It will seal.
We, we, we just, we just send it on, we move it on. So if you didn't get one, it was because nothing was sent. If you got one, our staff sends it right on through. So I, I don't know, because I don't even check. I, I told my staff, if anything is addressed to a board member, go ahead and put it in the package and send it up.
I guess my other, my other question is kind of to answer Mr. Powers's statement. I don't think any allegations have been made, any accusations have been made. What we're here to discuss is impropriety of, of what, what happened, the appearance of what happened. That, that was, that's the main reason why we're here, because, you know, it, it just didn't appear to pass the smell test, so to speak, you know? And, and I had some concerns about that, and I'm glad that you guys want to discuss it, because it's good. I mean, people need to know. So everybody wants to know what your position is, and I'm glad you read your statement. I, I, you know, Mr. Power, Mr. Mr. Lehman, you know, I'm glad that, that you guys all want to discuss this. It's, you know, it needs to be put out in the open. This is the only way that this body will, will maintain the integrity of, that it's supposed to have with a community, by, by being open and discussing these things.
Mrs. Galvano?
Yes, I'd like to say that I agree with Dr. Escobedo and with Mr. Powers, that we can't lose focus as a board. We know what, what is right, we know what we need to do. We need to refocus, we need to focus on the article today in today's paper about the Dream Act, the illegal students that are, are asking to have, if they go through two years of college, that they get their residency. That's part of something that we need to be supporting. We, we cannot lose focus. We cannot be, be going once against, one against each other. We're a team of eight, like Mr. Powers said. We need to, to refocus. And yeah, we're gonna have a lot of activities at Christmas. We're gonna have a lot of, of invitations. We go to the Brownsville Historical Museum. You know, if I see one walk in, sure, I'm gonna leave, I'll, I'll say hello. But I know if there's gonna be four, one of us will get up and leave, because we know that, that is what we're supposed to do. But we will say hello.
And just to kind of follow up on Mr. Cortez said, you know, I personally, I don't want to discuss this, I, I was placed on the agenda twice by you and by Mr. Colunga. And you're asking a lot of questions, which is good. We learn by asking questions. Uh, again, I go back to you're gonna receive new, lots and lots of training on open meetings, closed meetings, boardsmanship, ethics, so on and so forth, and that would be more appropriate to learn rather than during a board meeting. Mr. Pa, Mr. Lehman?
Yes, I, I passed this document, which is even more severe, because there has been an indictment by the AG, or has obtained a criminal indictment. Uh, and I make reference to the fourth paragraph to read it, and indulge in it, and, and then go back and I'll get your copy, so five five one point one forty-three of the government code, which it relates to. So I would, I would caution not just a quorum, just discussing three individuals or two individuals that start spreading. So I caution my, my board members. But Mr. Cortez, in all due fairness to you, you are expected to, by law, to, within ninety days, to take some training. So once you get that, I think you'll, you'll understand, and you will do your due diligence. We are a team of eight, including the superintendent. We should act like a team of eight, not like a team of one, or a team of two, or three, or four, we should be a team of, of eight, okay? And that's? okay? And that's, you know, it, it's pretty evident that where we're headed, this is disruptive, it is unfair for the superintendent, he needs to be focused on education. If someone out there wants to file charges on me personally, or Mr. Powers, or Mr. Kalunga, or any other board member, or you, then let it be, let the, let that legal process take forth. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Kalunga?
Sir?
Thank you, Dr.
We need to have some input from the public.
You're, you're out of order, sir, Mr. Kalunga.
We need to have some input from the public, Mr. Lehman is carrying the.
Dr. Escobedo?
Counselor?
I would suggest that you maintain control of this meeting, sir.
Yes, sir.
The public forum is over.
Sir, you need to sit down. Mr. Kalunga?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. In placing this item on the agenda, it was not intended as an attack on board members, it was mainly in the, the interest of the transparency in government, as well as that the public has the right to know of the activities of our board, and it is an opportunity to, or a forum to try to have an explanation about what happened, and also in view of the upcoming bond construction, I would prefer to have vendors present to us in, in a properly posted meeting about their products and what they can do for the district, so that we can have the information presented to us at the same time. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Kalunga, but like I said, you know, I've been at a table having a meal with a vendor with you present. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Aguilar?
You know, nothing's been said tonight, and it's true that when we go to conferences, we all meet as a board and enjoy whatever it is, the only difference is sometimes we need to be careful, that some of the vendors that we meet, we already have business with BISD versus someone that has not yet provided any service to BISD. I don't know how the others feel, but I guess it's just perhaps we need to be cautious?
Definitely.
That's what we're doing.
I fully agree.
Uh, because it does happen, it can happen, I think the, I guess the dividing line is, is that vendor already doing business with BISD in reference to, like, for instance, some of the architects that are building our schools, you see, and they take us out for lunch? And I, I believe also, I mentioned to their superintendent, when they provide you with gifts, and I said, well, how much is we allowed? If you can recall, Mr. Gonzales said, give me that form, so we can start documenting, documenting any gift that is given to us as a board member, and, and the guidelines, because we allow X number of dollars per vendor, I believe. Is that right, Mr.?
Yes, sir, it's 176.003, it's very clear.
So those can be documented, so it's just a caution, how do we meet with a vendor? What kind of, are they doing business with us itself, or have yet, not yet done any business? That's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
We've discussed this in detail, are we ready to move on, or is there more to be said?
Well, it's an action item, I don't know what Mr. Kalunga wants to take action on, so.
Mr. Kalunga? What's possible action? If there's no more discussion, I will open, any more discussion, I will open the floor for a motion, if there is one. Aguilar?
You know, I, I would like to, as long as, all this training that we go through, perhaps sometimes in the workshop that we are going to have on, when is it, January of the year?
13.
The 13th, that perhaps all of us need a reminder, that's good for all of us to be reminded, including myself.
Absolutely.
So perhaps, at that board meeting, that we need to go with this, and perhaps having someone to refresh our, our knowledge of ethics, or whatever needs to be done.
I fully agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to interject that even.
Mr. Lehman?
We, we can even strengthen our own policy if it need be, I mean, that's, that's something that can be looked at, and, and discussed, and get input from, from the public, but, you know, I think we've said it all, and I think we've stated our, our positions clearly.
I'll open the floor for a motion. If no motion, the item dies for lack of emotion. Moving on to item 10, consent agenda. I've received a list from my colleagues indicating that there's no need for discussion or deliberation for the following agenda items. We will not discuss item 8, 9, 10, 11, 14, 15, 17, 19, 20, 21, under 11, closed meeting, A personal matters, 23, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31. And that is it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Move, motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 12, discussion and action on moving back the school board election to May 2007. Mr. Cortez?
Well, I think we've, we've heard a lot, I don't want to, I don't know how, how somebody referred to it the other day, beat a dead horse, I mean, it's, it's an issue that we've, we've talked in, in great depth about, I think, we've had some interesting conversation with a lot of people, and we had some input last night at a committee meeting, and based on the people that were there, majority were in favor of moving it back to May. And we had a pastor in the audience yesterday, and he's still here in the room tonight, and he mentioned that he was there on behalf of his congregation, that was about 400 members, and today he spoke on behalf of a different group, United in the Progress for Cameron Park, and we had the president of the teachers' union, who's also in the room, and I know that, that he speaks on behalf of, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in the area of about 2,000 BISD employees, and, so I, I think that, that this issue about moving it back, I'm not sure what else I can say, other than, you know, I'm, I'm ready to, to vote to have it moved back.
Mr. Aguilar?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Yes, and, just to verify what Mr. Cortez said at the policy committee, we, for a change, we had a good crowd, and I was glad to see that, that the, we had a good audience with different ideas, different suggestions. I, I dare to say that the majority of those present were in favor of moving the elections to May. There were two that are abstaining, I believe, the president today, I even had one that I had to tell him that it was not a curriculum meeting, but I hope that he is present today, I know he is, that we do have a curriculum meeting scheduled for sometime in January, the 20, the 23rd, and I invite those that were present here for the policy committee last night. To, to invite you to a curriculum meeting on January the 3rd, because that is also important. There are certain committees that, that deal with cer, certain issues in, in, in education, but last night, the policy committee, as chairperson, I would say that the majority of the audience wanted to move it to May of 2007.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
Yes, sir, I, I need to make a few. As far as the transparency, whether people came in to, to decide November or May is good or bad, November, there are their opinions, and their opinions in May. I take Pastor Alvarez was very, very clear, and, and that we need to show transparency, irregardless whether it's the money, find out that we haven't paid the bill yet, because we're in question, that was misinformation, so, but the, the issue was to, to allow people to go out and vote, and we accomplished that. Mr. Cortez, you will be afforded the, the privilege of, of discussing the upcoming budget, and put your knowledge and input and training to work, but in, in keeping with the pastor's comments, you know, if, if we need a true accounting of what the public wants, constituents that voted for an individual, and I, or me, or the opposition, so to speak, it's not true representation, and if this is the issue, whether we take it back to May, or, or keep it in November, then let's take it out to the public, to the voters. And I commend the pastor for even allowing us, or giving us that example, and to possibly allow the public and the, the, the citizens of this district to, and voters of this district to actually tell us whether they do want to have it in May, or to keep it in November. Also, there's another issue, Mr. Kalunga alluded to three years, the statutes mention three years or four years, am I correct, counselor?
Mr. Saldana?
The, chapter 11 of the education code indicates that a school district may select either three-year terms or four-year terms.
Yeah, so that was misrepresentation.
They need to make a selection.
Yeah, so, and the pastor noted in, in discussing, because I congratulated him, I called him, he didn't know that we had elections every year. It's costly, very disruptive for administration, I don't think, and I say again, and I didn't mean to say that you were a horse last night, but we did hear it from you, that you want continuity. Dr. Sokowski even said he wanted four-year terms, because it allows continuity, and the superintendent and staff needs to know that they have a stable board. It's in, it's in the statutes. To say that we are not doing a due diligence, or, it's, there are conflicts, or morally incorrect, these are statutes in the law. Then Senator Lucio, State Representative Oliveira, and Solis, then they're doing something wrong for allowing statutes to be here, because they allow us certain discretion. I'm elected by a certain body, and like Mr. Powers said, we, we represent not only those that voted for us, but those that didn't vote for us, and didn't go out to vote, and we try to use prudent judgment. To say it's political or non-political, if that's the case, then let's take it out to the vote, to the voters, and let them vote, whether we stay in May, or go back to May and stay in November, and I would, I would even entertain that we have dialogue, and let the public know that maybe a four-year term, staggered terms, in being unison with the, with the city, if that's the case, they have four-year terms, the navigation district has four-year terms, so maybe we can look at that. If it's cost-cutting measures, that's an ideal measure to take. It would ensure stability, continuity for the superintendent at the time, because we would have elections every two years instead of one year. So there are many things that we can do to, to possibly make this a better district. I open the dialogue to make a decision right now, just saying that we've heard, I commend the pastor, and I think we should heed, that we, we need to, to continue to have a little bit more dialogue, and possibly do take it out to the voters, let them decide whether we, we stay in May, or, or we stay in November, or, or bring it back to, to May.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, other comments from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Kalunga?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. The, uh, policy meeting that we had last night, of course, argued that both sides, and the, yes, Mr. Lehman, we do have a choice on the three or four, but in the, during the original statute on education code, it, it allowed, at that time, a decision by the board was for three years, but we had never brought it up as an issue to go for four years. The other issue on, on the May 2007, it would be, I was elected for three-year terms, currently with the November election, I have three, three and a half years. So I would like to correct and reflect the, the public's, the public's position on a three-year term, as has been the, the, the original selection, and return to May 2007 would adjust my term to a three-year term. Thank you.
Mr. Aguilar?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Of course, it is difficult, since I'm going to run for reelection, but I'd rather have it in May, and that's my, my position. I'll take my risk, the risk that I might not be elected, or elected, whatever. To say, let the public decide, I, I think last night, when people come and talk to you and tell you, that at least the majority of them that were present, that they want to have it back to May, give us an indication as what the public is thinking. You mentioned, Mr. Lehman, to have a public input, even you mentioned the pastor, makes me wonder, when we did it the first time, did we ever do that, have a referendum? You see? If I, if I recall, I think last night's participation was further, more than we ever had in the previous time, that we talked about it way back in December. So, Dr. Escobedo, really, and the rest of my colleagues, are still in favor of having a, a three-year term. That's what I was elected for, for three years, no more, or no less, and if they want to elect me, fine, if, if they're not, is it okay with me? I'm not asking for additional six months, or any other extension to 2008, another six months, because that would give me a full, whole year, you see? And this is not what I run for office. I knew from the very beginning, it was going to be a three-year, a three-year term. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. We've discussed this in depth, and I really haven't heard anything new, it's the same thing over and over again. Mr. Powers?
Yeah, let me, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state something here, and I told this to Mr. Cortez, because this is his agenda. I believe in, in public input, I think we had two last time. I agree on the May 07, and I will support it, but I like what Pastor Alvarez said, let's have about three or four more forums, and bring them back in January, and, and then I will support it, because I did not curate this problem, I voted against it. But I think having a meeting last night, and then now voting on it, you know, all of us here on this board can call people to come, say, speak on our behalf, we all could have done that, okay? Let's face reality, but I, I feel more comfortable, because I'm really into running May, I mean, I've said it before, but let's take Pastor Alvarez's recommendations, go three to his community, wherever he wants to put it, come back in January and vote it. Now, Mr. Saldana, I give a legal question, do we still have plenty of time on this issue? Because some people out here are saying, if we don't do it by December 31st, we cannot change the elections.
Mr. Saldana?
You do have time, I wouldn't say plenty of time, and I reiterate my comments from last night, that justice does have to issue its preclearance on any changes. The closer you get to the election, the more difficult you're going to have to argue the notice issue.
Right.
Which justice will certainly take into consideration. But technically speaking, yes, you still have time.
Yeah, because they're not going to work during the holidays anyways, I don't care what we do today. I feel more comfortable with a couple more forums, because I will support it if the public really wants it. Like y'all had the policy meeting yesterday, there was nothing in the Herald about it. So how really important is it right now? Which I, when I told Cortez this, and, and that I will support in January, so I'd rather make a motion to move the table this, and, and have a final decision in January.
Well, there's a motion on the table to postpone this until further notice, I'd rather not give a specific.
Well, let me, let me, a little more discussion before we do that. I just want to make sure that we do have proper public forum, if that's the case, and I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Cortez, people voted for you, they probably didn't know who you were, but you probably had some good statements to say, and, but they, they voted you for three years too. To say that you're going to be a quitter by going through two and a half, you know, it works both ways. But to be neutral on, on the issue, like, and I don't mean to harp on the pastor, but if we needed to be, maybe we were lacking a little more transparency last time, Mr. Aguilar, maybe we learn from that and be more transparent, and actually do take it out to the voters, if that's the case, because I think it's in, it's in the best interest, simply because there was an issue of apathy, it got cured. One thing that when I took office in May, I, I didn't, you know, it took me eight months to almost a year to really understand the process, it's very complicated here at, at the education level, and the complexity of this district, so as you might find, unless you, you feel that you know it, but you're lacking training in, in some, certain issues, so it's a learning curve. But I'm more concerned on the transparency more than anything else, and, and if I fail to, to be a part of that the first time, then I like, I'm, I'm prepared to eat my crow, but I'm prepared also to take it out to the voters, not just a few that come in, because like Mr. Powers said, if I need to fill this room, I can fill it, but that is not the due process, if that's the case. I'm not going to politicize this issue, I'm going to leave it out to the voters, and that's the way I would put on the table.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Lehman, for starters, I'm not a quitter, sir. And I think you're out of order in those comments. And I will say, I will say this. Many people that voted for me did know me, and that's why they voted for me. And many of those same people that voted for me told me that they didn't, that they weren't in favor of board trustees extending their term of office by six months, just because the state legislature allowed them to. And so one of the items that was on my list of things that I would want to do, I know you've referenced my platform once before, there are several things that I'd like to see come to fruition in my term of office. But given the time-sensitive nature, as Mr. Powers alluded to, I felt that this was the appropriate time to bring it back. Because there are members of this board that need to prepare, if in fact, we do vote them to go back to May, the way I would be in favor, Mr. Powers and some of the other members said they would be. I believe that those members need the time to prepare. Running for office is not an easy thing. You have to plan parties, you've got to get committees, you've got to do many things. And in all fairness to everybody who's up for election in the upcoming year, I felt that this was the ideal time, so that they can have a fresh start in January. Because the Department of Justice will probably be open, sir. They'll probably close for Christmas, maybe the day after Christmas, but they'll probably open all this week. They'll open after Christmas, I'm pretty sure of it, and they'll close for New Year's. So to say that there isn't time, I'm sure that there is plenty of time. These holidays, you know, not everybody gets a two-week break. And so because of that time-sensitive portion of it, I felt that this was the best time to bring it back. And there are other things. So it's not just an election. It's also, it's also the cost benefit that it would be to the district to have it in May. And sure, you're right, but Pastor Alvarado said tonight that we should consider moving them back and then placing a referendum, asking the voters for what they think. If it's four years that you're asking for, then bring it to May, put a referendum, asking the community if that's what they choose, extending the term four years. If that would be a cost savings to the district, great, you know. But bring it back, have ample time to do what needs to be done in your races, and then put a referendum on if that's what you, if that's what this board so chooses.
Excuse me, let me, let me.
Mr. Lehman?
Well, in all fairness, I guess what comes first, a horse at the cart. So let's say we move it to May and we have a referendum, transparency. And let's say they vote to have it back in November. So we have another election. It's not fair for this individual. So transparency has to be done clearly at the beginning. And then there again, if we failed to show it, as some of the colleagues are saying, forcing it back because personal opinion, personal opinion, not to do it, let's leave it out to the public. That's a referendum. I mean, I mean, you're very sure that May is the issue. So to have a referendum afterwards and it goes back to November, we would have elections in November.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not asking for a referendum to consider November. I would be asking that if this body moved it today back to May, I think you're missing the point that we consider, if that's, if that's so what you guys want, to move it, if that's what the legislature says, that it can be a three- or four-year term, then to adopt, put some referendum, asking the voters to extend the one year, if that's what you're alluding to, but not in a November format because of the cost.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
The May format.
Mr. Cortez has the floor. I mean, we're going in circles, nothing new.
Just clarify, I just need to clarify.
Are you done, Mr. Cortez?
Yeah.
Let me just clarify. Referendum placing, there are two issues. One is whether, and I'm taking the pastor's earlier comments, that the decision to have it in May or November, then we should, technically, if we're going to squabble back and forth, then let's take it and leave it to the voters. And that would be in a referendum format. Additionally, something to consider through the dialogue, through meetings, and taking them to the public, to consider having staggered terms that's more conducive to a superintendent and his or her staff. To have continuity, to have four-year terms, that's something that the public will tell us. I'm not putting both items together, these are separate issues, but they can only be discussed in its proper form. That's all I'm asking. To move the elections to May and then to have discussion and have another referendum to decide whether we want to have them actually in May or November, it's not logical. And this is my opinion, that everyone here has an opinion. But if we're going to fight back and forth, let's just take it out to the public, let them decide. But there needs to be more dialogue, just to have your opinion or my opinion or somebody else's opinion. The law was designed, and like, there again, the senator and the two state representatives, you know, that's what they do. They make law and we interpret law and we try and do the best we can with it. But if it's not perceived to be the correct thing, then let the public tell us what is the correct thing.
Mr. Saldana?
Yes, sir, Dr. Escobar. I feel that it's incumbent that I clarify an issue here because I think you all are mixing apples and oranges or bananas or what have you. The issue regarding three- or four-year terms is a separate issue. It is out of the Education Code and has nothing to do with the adjustment of terms. The adjustment of terms comes through the Election Code and the past, and this report is going to get a little bit complicated, through past legislation that's found in Chapter, I believe, 46 of the Election Code, that gives a governing body the opportunity to change its election date from one general election date to another, and the power to adjust the terms of the members accordingly when those changes are made. Mr. Lehman, whether you have a three- or four-year term, those statutes have nothing to do with that. Those are separate. Those are absolutely, completely separate. And there's really no legal issue here in that respect. The Election Code allows you, which when these moves were made, allowed the board to adjust terms. It doesn't change from a three to a four, or a three to a three and a half. That's its effective change, but the terms that are still provided for are three-year terms under the Election Code. Now, if another issue wants to be that we go to four-year terms, that's another issue. But you all are interplaying it in a way that's confusing you guys, and there really shouldn't even be discussions about that. The issue really is, is more, as Mr. Aguilar says, an ethical or a policy decision or a public relations issue. But legally, the adjustment comes from the Election Code. You guys can adjust your terms via the laws that passed in the Election Code. Now, with this addition of HB 1, you've got the same provision back thrown into the Education Code that says, if you go back to May or go, switch to November, the joint election requirement, a board may adjust its terms. It doesn't matter, a board may have four-year terms, it may have three-year terms. Those are separate issues. The power to change the terms, to adjust the terms, comes from the enabling legislation in the Education Code and in HB 1. And so they should not be confused.
Thank you, Mr. Saldana. We've discussed this in significant depth, and we have yet to go, we're not making progress. Nothing new is really being said. I personally am ready to move on with school business. Mr. Powers?
I made a motion. The motion to table?
Table. A motion to postpone this item until further notice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
That was four. I'll oppose. My motion passes 43. We can move on to item 13.
I'd ask a question related to that tabling.
Sure.
What would be a timeline that Mr. Powers had in mind as far as?
Until further notice. That's why we specifically said it's to further notice. Moving on, item 13, discussion action with regards to Facilities Committee. Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, I had requested this item be brought before the board today. In light of recent events and because of the appearance of improprieties and given what the Brownsville Herald wrote on December 10th, I felt that because the members present at said dinner also happened to sit as members of the Facilities Committee, I felt that it'd be appropriate if those members agreed to step down from the Facilities Committee. And that, Mr. Board President, you can appoint new members, just to kind of help preserve the integrity of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. You know, again, it comes down to familiarizing yourself with school procedures. I was chairman of Policy, Chairman of the Policy Committee for several years, not knowing who was on the committee, because really everyone's involved equally. And if you're going to change elections and committees every time there's finger pointing, the district will never move forward. So if it's my prerogative to change this committee, I want to leave it as is. Any more discussion? Mr. Powers?
I, you know, when I, you know, once again, I mean, I tell you what, you came in with a bang there, Mr. Cortez, and you came with your gloves off, and it's not good. And to make comments of this nature, even you said in the paper, I'm going to read your comment.
Let me take it out.
I don't think, as a Brownsville trustee, you should be meeting with any vendor at all, even if it's just a social visit. Now, are we going to knock off that party you went to? You going to knock off those vendors? See, we all took an oath. Our right hand went up in the air. We took a solemn oath. We swear it in front of people while we can do applicable state laws, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, constitutional. And I think, Dr. Escobar, you hit it on the nail. All of us are going to be present at these committees. There's no, we have no single power. And we develop a bond, citizen bond committee. How important is that? And I don't know who's advising you, because it took me about nine, 10 months to even think about putting anything on an agenda. But, well, once again, I'm just going to tell you, it hurts, knowing that you never discussed it with me. That's all.
Mr. Lehman?
I just want to remind Mr. Cortez, this is a team of eight, not a team of one. Okay? So you learned that in your training.
Any other comments? If not, we move forward. Moving on to item 16, recommend approval to pay Elsa Heyman, Laguna Vista, Texas.
Hagan.
Heyman?
Hagan.
Hey, Heyman?
Hagan.
At Laguna Vista, Texas, in the amount not to exceed $24,000 from budgeted categorical funds for math consultant services, Lopez High School for 2006, 2007 school year, services to be rendered to the district's needs and funding. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Cortez. Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, Dr. Escobar. Again, Lopez High School needs all the help we can give them. So I really don't question in what the consultant are trying to do, to get. And had an extensive, excellent vida in our backup information. I'm just wondering what her track is in, as a consultant, in terms of scores in other schools. That's all I want to ask.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Maybe we can.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, as the members of the board. Mr. Aguilar, Este, the one that really knows, because she's the one who's been recommending work with her, I did talk to Ms. Manfauz concerning this particular agenda item. She feels that this consultant can really help as far as what success rate, she probably knows more about than I do. So Ms. Manfauz, could you address the question?
Mr. President, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, yes, we were very careful in checking out her background. She has had very good success as a math teacher herself with GT students and also regular students. Most recently, she was working at the High School of Technology, the Sentry Preparatory School. We did check Sentry to ensure that we were on a clear, clean path there.
I guess the basic question, Ms. Manfauz, is has she had a proven success record?
She has not been a campus principal long enough, in other words, to have proven whether or not she's been on AYP or off of AYP. Does she have success as a math teacher? Yes, sir.
Has she had any success as a consultant prior to this?
And that's the question we want to know.
That's the question.
And where at, and what were the results of the scores, things like, that's what we're looking at, as a says, as, excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez, what we were talking about, we saw the vida. We saw all the training she has, yes. But there was one section that was missing. And if we're going to hire a consultant, if I were a consultant, I would say, I've been a consultant at this school district, scores went from this point to this point. And this is what I was looking at. I mean, we can have, I'm not questioning her credentials, but I just can ask you, was she successful in other schools? That's what I'm saying. And the only thing that can tell me is somebody.
Yes.
Certainly will find out, sir.
Okay.
I do not have knowledge of whether or not she has consulted with other school districts. She does come recommended by our AYP consultant that we are using there right now. They have worked together. And so, yes, that's a recommendation. But whether or not she's been a consultant in other districts, I will get back to you on that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Comment?
Mr. Lehman?
Here. Mr. Gonzalez, you chose to bring this item to the board out of courtesy because it's under the $25,000 threshold?
Yes, this is, not only that, but when we look at educational consultants, if we look at the aggregate, that goes over the $25,000. So we bring it to the board. But really, it's more importantly to the point that we bring this to the board because we need to recognize what we're doing to try to help our schools that need assistance. Lopez certainly needs assistance at a particular time. We do not want it to go to a stage three. We're trying to do everything we can to be able to help it out. And this was recommended by Ms. Manfauz. I worked with her. She did tell me that the person that we have helping us over there under AYP did recommend this person. So we knew that. And this is trying to do our best to get as much help to Lopez as we can.
The reason I ask, because in the previous times, we hadn't had this. So I commend you for it.
Sure.
Keep being this informed.
Mr. Aguilar?
And I don't think anyone in this board is trying to keep anything from helping Lopez High School.
Right.
The question is, we've got to make sure that whoever we bring as consultant, there has been always been the question that we bring the best consultant to our district. And when certain information is not there, I think we should ask to ensure ourselves that we are getting the best consultant and not just information or vida that somebody tells me. We can have, all my respect to this consultant, because she indicated all of what she taught and whatnot and all the second certificates. That's what the point was. But if Ms. Manfauz says that she will bring us that whatever.
Sure.
I'm satisfied.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, real quick? Mr. Powers?
I've always said, fund the campuses. All I need to know is the principal recommending this. Okay. It'd be nice if they were signed as the administrator in charge, because that's her campus. So if she wants it, then I support it.
Come on, Otis. How many past two or three years, we had all consultants going to the high school and we're still in, come on, come on.
I have a motion, I have a motion, a second.
All the question.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, item D, recommend approval for the following contracts and agreements, number 18. Recommend approval to enter entry memorandum understanding between the state or middle school and the parents advocating for student success. Pass, Brownsville, Texas, for the 2006, 2007 school year at no cost to district. Services to be rendered, services to be rendered subject to the district's needs and funding. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. Galvan. All in favor, raise your right hand. I'll oppose.
No, no, he said, no, he circled and he said no. Aye.
I'm sorry, I lost my concentration. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion passes unanimously.
He's abstaining.
Mr. Aguilar?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay.
I'm abstaining from the board, simply because I'm involved, I know the program, I know the people involved. That's the reason I'm abstaining. It's not that I'm against it.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar.
You almost forgot.
Moving on to item F, recommend approval to the following RFP, number 22. Recommend approval for RFP number 06-024 regarding the 125 Cafeteria Plan TPA Colonial slash GM to continue to provide Section 125 Cafeteria Plan services to the Brownsville Independent School District for the next two fiscal years. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Galvan. Mr. Colunga? Mr. Colunga?
Yeah, from, I, I did not attend the insurance committee meeting, so I just wanted to find out if, if it's the same, same plan as it last year from, from '05 as previously adopted.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scuado, members of the board. Mr. Colunga, to answer your question, yes, it's, it's the same thing. The, the committee, the insurance, employee insurance committee had recommended everything for three years. I checked all their notes, everything they had presented. Unfortunately, when it was presented the first time to the board for, for adoption as a TPA, they only did it for one year. And I said, well, why did we do it for one year when it was a three-year recommendation by the insurance committee? But because I wanted to be in total compliance, I decided to bring it back to the board to ensure that, that it got the two years in accordance. We did have a policy committee meeting. The chairperson of the policy committee meeting was here. They certainly supported. This is at no cost to the district. This is strictly having somebody be the TPA for third-party administration of the employees, the insurances that they provide, that they pay for. The district doesn't have any expenditures. So to answer your question, yes, the employee committee is still in favor of it and we're moving forward with it.
Thank you.
And I certainly would, I, I don't know if you all know what the Cafeteria 125 Plan is, but it's needed by the employees because it, I know I, I want my 125 because everything that I pay for insurance is then is not taxed. It's free tax dollars. So it's a service for the employees and it's free to the district and free to the employees.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want one, one comment.
Mr. Lehman?
I made issue with the consultant's recommendation because the TPA is actually taking on the burden to no cost the service. But I think they were limited, so I just want to make sure, I, and I understood it for one year, not three years. So I just want to make sure that we're complying with the procurement regs. And at the same time, nothing changes in the, in the agreement or?
Nothing changes, Mr. Lehman. And one thing I want to make very clear.
I think the vendor was concerned that he could not, he was restricted.
No, he's not restricted. And one thing we want to make very clear of, and, and I want to bring this up, and, you know, I, we checked with, with TA and Rita Chase and everybody that we could possibly call concerning this issue. And this is all basically a, strictly an employee-driven plans that we have. It has nothing to do with the district, is not subject to the procurement process of 44.031 because we don't expend any money. So in, in meeting with Rita Chase or talking to Rita Chase, talking to Mr. Sanchez, and it was something that was brought up last year. And I asked Mr. Sanchez, why was it brought up? Well, I think they wanted just to sort of verify, but is it something that really needs to come up to the board for approval? No, because it's not. But it is a courtesy to let the board know and approve it. And as such, I will keep that courtesy up because it is important for the board to know. And once it goes, it goes to transparency and that's all we're doing it for.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any further comments? I have a motion, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, closed meeting as pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.082, and 551.084. The board now goes to closed session. Board reconvenes after closed session. Item number 24, recommend approval of term contractual personnel for 2006, 2007 school year administrative for elementary curriculum and instruction, subject to receipt of all outstanding documentations. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion passes six to one.
Grabbing a opposing.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion passes five.
Oppose.
Okay. Colunga and Galvan oppose. Everybody else is in favor.
Five to.
Five to.